To order the White County Board of Education special call meeting for Tuesday, Thursday, January 23rd to order. If you would, please rise and Mr. Jason McDonald lead us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald. So I'd like to welcome everyone to this special call meeting, White County Board of Education tonight. Tennessee Code to Annotate and Board Policy 1400 states that every meeting of the board is open to the public except where law allows a closed session. The agenda for the board meetings are posted on the district's website at www dot whiteco schools dot net at least three days prior to each meeting. Each meeting agenda by law includes an item reserved for public comment. Sign up sheet is made available prior to beginning the regular meeting. Individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comment. Board meetings are streamed with the help of Warrior Media for live or recorded viewing. Links are provided on the district's website. Attending and/or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent for comments and appearances to be used. So tonight is a special called meeting as said, and in special called meeting, we will only be considering and having deliberation on the agenda item that is on the table tonight that was presented to you. And so there wouldn't be no other board action taken other than that that's on the agenda. So tonight's meeting is called as a result of the state legislatures meeting next week to discuss Governor Lee's proposed school voucher program. This is a significant proposal being considered by the state that will affect public schools, those participating in and those providing alternate education paths to public schools, the taxpayers of Tennessee regardless of whether or not they have students or family members in the system in some capacity. With that said, as a board, we have not deliberated on the subject of vouchers as Governor Lee is proposing. Due diligence at a minimum would suggest that we have deliberation publicly on the subject, and that's why we're here. This also gives us the opportunity to take action in the form of a public statement or resolution on the matter if that's what the board decides to do. In all cases, we can only take board action through this process, and tonight's meeting is to give us that opportunity if we choose. We'll say that before we continue on in our agenda, this was an item that was left off, but I do want to use this time to allow any board member, if there is a potential conflict of interest of anything that we will be discussing tonight, please let that be known at this time.
Mr. Chairman, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to ask that we do that, but I will say that my wife is an educator in this system, and any of the comments that you hear from me tonight will be in the betterment, for the betterment of the students in this school district. So there is no conflict of interest on my part tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, my husband also works for this school district, but again, after all the reading and all the discussion, these are my opinions, and there's no conflict.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Officer.
Mr. Chairman, likewise, my wife is an employee at White County High School. Comments that I make is mine, will be mine alone. There is no doubt about it.
All right. Thank you. So let the minutes reflect that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all identify that they have spouses working within the board, but nothing that we're be considering tonight on our agenda would constitute a conflict as it's defined. So with that said, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, our next agenda item, which is our only agenda item tonight, and that is the 2025 Education Savings Act, House Bill, House Bill One, I think it's more appropriately titled in the bill, Education Freedom Act of 2025. So I'm assuming that you've all read the documents that have been provided by our director from TSBA and other sources. You've had a copy of the House Bill Number One, and so I'm going to give our director the opportunity to summarize the information that we received, and then we'll go around the table for discussions and questions. And after that, I will entertain any motions that may come out of our discussion. So with that being said, Mr. Stromberger, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairman said, the, there's been a special session called to the General Assembly to discuss the Education Freedom Act of 2025. It's otherwise kind of known as the voucher bill, and that's coming up soon. And so many school districts across the state have taken action and issued resolutions in opposition to this act. And we have, that has come up maybe a time or two in front of this board. And I expressed to the chairman that perhaps the, because of the nature of the timeliness before our next board meeting, that perhaps the board might want to discuss that before it goes to special session. So the chairman set up this, this meeting this evening. I don't want to speak for any of our legislators, but I do know that it's been very powerful for other legislators to have this information, such as resolutions from the local school boards that represent so many constituents in each district. It's been powerful for them to have that in their hand, to make their decisions, and to stand before their colleagues in the General Assembly, and to be able to speak out against vouchers. You have lots of information in your folders there, and we, I have printed off some for your review this evening as well. It is my personal opinion that this is, this is a bad thing for public education across our state. You know, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to reroute funds out of public education into private schools. And I've been very vocal on the subject, but I'll be very clear on it again this evening, that I'm not afraid of competition, but I'm afraid of unfair competition, and that's what this is. If we were playing by the same rules, and they had to do the same, follow the same standards, and take the, our students, their students had to take the same tests, and their teachers had to be accredited the same way that our teachers have, and so on and so forth, I'd be, I'd be fine with this type of proposal. But that's not what we're dealing with. And for those reasons, and many others that you can, that I've alluded to before, I'm against this, this legislation. But this is not my decision tonight. This is something for the school board to entertain, and so we provide this information for your discussion, deliberation, and consideration. And this would be, this information, should the, should the board choose to, to issue a resolution against vouchers, would be put in the hands of our representatives and shared with others in the General Assembly as a voice from White County Schools.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stromberger. So board members, just, you know, to reiterate what, what was said, this is our opportunity to speak, okay? And it's our opportunity to, to discuss this, this matter openly and in public. And so we have, we have perspective from, from our director, and, but I appreciate him understanding his role and understand this is, this is our, this is something that we as a board would be, would be sharing. It would be a board's decision. So I would, I'd like to just go around the table and give everybody the opportunity to comment, pull out, pull out maybe some, some thoughts that you had in the information that was, was provided. And we can have the discussion. So if anybody would like to volunteer to go first, that would be great. Otherwise, I will start in alphabetical order.
I'll be happy to jump in. I had a good conversation with Representative Sheryl at the prayer breakfast on Monday, shared some of my thoughts with him there. One of the things that I've heard numerous times is this is about school choice, and we're giving parents a choice. I feel like we've always had a choice when it comes to how we want our kids educated. It's public schools, it's private schools, it's home schools. I don't see how this provides any additional options for, to meet that argument. The second piece is, I would hate to see anything take away from funding coming to public education. By far, Tennessee students are, are taught through public education. And if the money that's looking to be allocated here came to public education, the changes that others may want to see might actually be, come to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And also, Representative Sheryl, we appreciate you being here tonight and joining us as well. Thank you. Anybody?
I'll jump in and kind of echo what, what Mr. Smith said. You know, we, you look at the graphics that we were given in our, in our packet. Tennessee has 95 counties. Only 44 of those counties have a private school in them. That leaves, what, 51 counties that don't have a private school in. Public education has always been the forefront of the educational process in the state of Tennessee. 300 private schools are eligible for this, and 44 counties are going to benefit, or 100, or 95 counties are going to have to pay for what 44 counties are going to benefit from. And that's, that's not the way that public education, and like, like Mr. Smith said, we've always had school choice. We can, we can choose where we want to go to school, and choose where we want to live. We can choose if we want to homeschool or not. That's never been, it's never been about choice. This has been about money, and I'm afraid that that's going to be the downfall of this. Another thing that was in your packet, talking about vouchers imply that students in rural schools will be better off learning at a private school in another community than they would be in our, in our hometown, in their hometown. How far from the truth is that? This is going to benefit Davidson, Hamilton, Shelby counties. That's going to be three of the biggest counties that are going to benefit from the money that's going to be there. And it's going to take my tax dollars, your tax dollars, and everybody across the state's tax dollars to fund this. I don't understand why we have to force school choice when we already have school choice. I'm a firm believer in public education. I went through it my entire, my entire career. And some people might argue and disagree with me, but I think I turned out okay. I think it turned out okay. Everybody in this room is in benefit of public education. And we've got people who are working in universities, working in universities. We've got master electricians. We've got former educators. Public education is the most important thing that we can offer our students. I don't think we need to take money from our public schools to give to private schools. Like Mr. Smith said, if we put the money that's going to be funded to this, more of these programs that we have in our public schools could be even better than they are now. Thank you, Ms. Gill.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
I have a question regarding the application process. So these students will complete an application. They have to take a test. Is that, is that correct? Okay, they just have to complete an application. All right. And if they're chosen for that voucher, is that an every year voucher, or is that a one time? I don't know that the parents, I would think, okay, I've received this voucher. I'm a ninth grade student. I'll have that nine through 12. As a parent, that might be my thought. Well, then if it's an application every year, then my sophomore may not make the cut. Therefore, I go back to public school.
I don't know the answer to that. I've not really heard that post. I think it remains because there's a limit the first year, and then they would see how many more people would need, and they can expand the number that they're going to offer in subsequent years. So I'm assuming that means that it'll remain with that student, and then they'll monitor it to see if they need more. That'd be my understanding. I don't know that for sure, but my understanding is that once they've applied and received it, as long as their school choice doesn't change, that they'll continue to receive that, that award.
Then are they responsible to keep that, if they choose that school, that, that private school that entire year? Let's say it's not a good fit, and come Christmas, they're ready to go. Does another student get that? I mean, could that just be a revolving door for that student?
Yeah, that's another issue with this, is what is the accounting side of it for the schools, for the incoming institutions, and what, what personnel will be, have to be assigned to handle that, that thing? It'd be outside of ours, but our school system, but that, that's a concern as well. That's not really addressed. It's not addressed in the bill.
Exactly. All things that public schools deal with is just not addressed with this voucher program, and I don't feel like it's real clear for, for parents.
Thank you. Anything else? Questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll go.
Ms. Officer.
So as alluded to before, we've had school choice, and we currently have school choice. But the biggest standout to me is when you look at the map, like you said, of how many counties have these private schools. It's very few are going to be able to use these vouchers. Yes, it's tied to money, but somehow going to a private school is better. You're going to be more academically prepared if you go to a private school. Completely disagree with that. And in the information that we have, it shows that that is not true. When we're looking at what these tests are showing, there's a sentence in here, and it says that the EISA students' test results aren't anything to write home about. Somehow people are thinking that if you go to a private school, you're more educated than if you go to White County High School. Our public school system, yes, we have some downfalls. We do. But overall, it's more of a positive. Taking this money into those activities that we can do to help the students in a holistic approach, we can do in the public school system. We do not need these private schools out there.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
So I've got a question. I may have overlooked it. I mean, because I'm in agreeance about the map, and that, all my kids went to public schools, and I did, everybody in my family has. But I didn't see homeschooling. Did I see, did I miss it? Did anybody see anything about homeschooling in here? All it says is private schools.
No, I don't believe that's included in this version of the bill.
But it was last, last time.
It was, and last time, I can't speak for everyone, but there was a large pushback from the homeschool community at that time. In short, they didn't want the government in there. It's why they went homeschool in the first place. So I can't speak for all those entities, but that was the message I heard.
I should tell you something.
That's not included.
And that's why I was, because I thought last time it was in there, and nothing. It's all about private school system.
And that, in my opinion, speaks again to discrimination, this discriminatory nature of this bill is that now you're saying you have freedom of choice, but you're not allowing those homeschool students to choose to take this money and use it. You know, they're being excluded from this. So it's limiting their freedom of choice, but it's allowing it for certain select groups, so.
You know, and then if you've got one in Davidson County that's here, and they've got to go all the way over there, what if, what if they can't get them there? What if they have to start missing, you know, what if they start missing because a parent can't get them there? You know? That's all. I'm good. I'm good. Yes, thank you.
Well, I'll share, share some comments. And first of all, for those in the audience, public, anyone that's watching us online, we have, we have some very good data and information packets on the voucher program impact on public education. And so I would encourage you, if you have, if you have interest, reach out to central office, and I'm sure that staff will help provide that information that we're, we're looking at tonight. Actually, this may be also posted on our website for tonight's meeting. Is that linked, Ashley, to the agenda items? Is it, it is? Okay, so this information will be on our website, too. So that's another way you could access it to, to, to see what, the information that we're, we're looking at tonight. So I don't think I need to rehash the fact that the state of Tennessee does allow for alternatives to public education. That's, that's been mentioned. And so obviously, that's, that's something in a, in a free, in a free society, such as the United States, everybody would, wants to, we appreciate the opportunity of freedom of choice and in things in, in public, in education. The route we choose education would fall into that, that category as well. And appreciate the fact, being enough, that this, this program, as it appears, would have, it wouldn't, it would have, have impact on, on certain, certain communities, and maybe not others. And in situation where White County is today, it would not impact us from the fact that we have competition in private schools or other educational institutes here in, here in a county. The thing that, that, from my standpoint, on something that hasn't been, been covered, and I feel is, is equally as important, that stood out to me, is while, yes, there is proposal, the scholarships for these vouchers are limited today, and that may not appear to be a big number, but I, I can tell you this, Representative Sheryl, you, you custom to see numbers maybe larger than what we might ordinarily see. But anytime you start taking that 7,000, you times that by 20, 30, 40, and 50, it becomes to be a very large number. Would you agree, Mrs. McGill? So, so it may not be a large number today, but if more and more opportunities for vouchers became available, it could turn into a large number. And ultimately, what does that impact? That impacts the taxpayers of state. And so that's, from that standpoint, it's, you're creating, creating an opportunity to incur cost for something that I'm not sure what problem you're trying to solve. I'm really not sure what problem you're trying to solve with vouchers. So because again, you may be, you know, I think maybe as Mr. Stromberger stated it, an example, some of my sales tax dollars go to the repair of roads across the state, Interstate 840. But I can't go to the state and say, hey, I want my, my portion of monies that's going to repair potholes on 840 to come and repair the potholes in the subdivision, the street in the subdivision which I live. So it's, you know, it's, that's pulling money out. I can't do that. And so just because I might want to choose an alternate means of education, doesn't mean that I can pull those monies out unless a bill like this passed. So that is, and what that does, it creates a challenge from the standpoint of, in the Tennessee state constitution, the state is, is constitution states that we will educate our, our students. All students, doesn't put any parameters on what type of students. We have to make, we have to, we get to educate smart students, like Miss McGill. And then they had to educate students like me. So it, there was no, you know, there's no, this constitution puts no barriers on that. So it, so the state has to educate its children. It's mandated to do that. And so whether private schools, whether home schools, whether any other type of, of education opportunity came up, the state still has responsibility. And last year in, in May, we sat around this table, and we were considering a, a budget, and we were looking at a deficit budget of $2.5 million to provide education for our, our students here in the county. And unfortunately, you can't stop the, the clock of inflation and the impact of inflation. And so as our costs will continue to rise, we're, that has to be funded somewhere. So I'm not sure how, the state has limited resources as well. So, you know, we're, we start pulling, and then the students, the money being tied to the students, as that is pulled away, our fixed costs do not change. And so we're still, we're going to be faced with that. Ultimately, who does that impact? Well, it's going to impact the, the, the local taxpayers, and it's going to impact the state taxpayers. It'll probably end up affecting the local taxpayers first, because state has their formula of how they're, how and how much they're going to pay. And there'll come a point in time when they may turn to the county and say, now it's your turn. That could, that could, could happen. Other states have, have tried this, and the information, one of the things that, that stood out, stood out to me was the fact that some neighboring states, they, they tried this with a budget of 65 million, $65 million, I think it was, for, for a voucher program. And this past year, their cost was $325 million. I think that's our, our good friends in the state of Arizona. So that caused them to put off projects, other projects, like, like improving their water delivery system. Because at the end of the day, states, not like the federal government, that have limited, limited resources. So it's about where you're appropriating those resources. And resources that are, have the potential to pull away from education is, that's something we have to do. I think we, public education, which we're mandated to do, I think that's very risky. And it has a, a risk to taxpayers, taxpayers like those of us in this audience tonight, and those taxpayers that are not yet born. So it does have impact from, from that, that standpoint. The, I think the, the one thing that, that I think, and like, this TSBA, they have an info, info brochure, that goes through the, the steps of how does this play out? And so I'd just like to share this example for, for those in attendance and listening, just so you can, can understand some of the information we're looking at. It says, Emma P attends her local public school. It costs $9,414 to provide Emma's education. Emma remains enrolled at her local public school and does not use a private school voucher. The cost to provide Emma an educate, provide Emma an education remains the same. So the cost to the state, the taxpayers, that remains. So the cost to the state, the taxpayers, that remains the same. Alex attends his local public school. It costs ninety-four hundred and fourteen dollars to provide Alex's education. Alex's family decides to utilize the new voucher program to partially pay for tuition at a private school. The public school, the, the public cost to provide Alex's education, uh, Alex an education is now sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars, of which seven thousand seventy-five hundred dollars is the voucher. And then the family would end up funding the remaining ninety-four hundred and fourteen dollars, um, with, uh, and, excuse me. Read that.
Yeah, that's really confusing because I think that's part of the hold harmless that they're saying in that first year is that they're going to still award that money to the public school, but then that following year it will be gone. And that's one of the caveats in the bill and I think they're trying to sell is that, that the schools are not going to lose money on this deal. It's going to be separate and outside.
On, on year one.
On year, on year one.
So the, uh, so then you go to the one that goes to a private school and said, um, there's no cost to, today, there's no cost for somebody going to a public, uh, for a private school. There's no cost to the public to provide Tony's education. But then the family decides to use the voucher program to offset some of his costs. Now this student that was in a private school, the public, public, uh, cost is now, uh, contributing seventeen, uh, seven thousand seventy-five hundred dollars to that pri, that, uh, student's private education, uh, costs that they're not incurring now. So, um.
Which that means you took not just in the county that he was in, in the private school that he was in, then that took money from me, you, and everybody in this room and, and all those other ninety-five counties across the state, took money out of those taxpayers' pockets to pay for this, to pay for this young man's private school education, which he was already, they'd already chose to go that route.
Of it, obviously in this example, it was already working for them. And it, it was not, there was, there was no, uh, no, uh, barrier there to, uh, to prevent them from getting the education that they freely wanted to pursue. So, um, I, I have big concerns on, on this, uh, on this, this bill. For the items you mentioned, plus the cost standpoint, uh, the cost to, to the, to the state, um, ultimately to the taxpayers because we're the ones that, uh, that fund the state. It, uh, could it, it's in sales tax. They'll have to figure out some way how to pay it, pay it, but, you know, you look at sales tax option, you look at franchise excise taxes as an option, which impacts businesses. They'll look, if you start running short of cash, they'll start looking for ways to, to, to find those funds to, to support this. Maybe able to do it this year, maybe able to do it next year, but there'll come a point in time, an inconvenient point in time, when they'll be having to make a choice to say, do we improve, you know, our electrical grid? Or do we continue with this voucher program that now everybody expects? So, um, I think that's, again, if, if I better understood the problem they were trying to solve, maybe it makes sense, but it just doesn't to me. Ms. McGill, I'm sorry, I, I skipped you before I started, started my, uh, talk. How would you, would you like to say?
Yes. Um, actually, we talked about this in class, uh, when the bill first came up.
In what class was that?
AP Government.
There you go.
He, uh, our teacher, uh, asked us what we thought about it and, um, a, a lot of the argument was, well, then the, uh, the private school would just raise the cost.
Oh, really?
Yeah, like.
Would they do that?
Yeah, they, they.
Would it, would a, would a, a pri, private institution or even public institutions that charge tuition? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, because they're not going to take people that they don't want. They're going to continue having the people they want, so they're just raising the cost of, of getting in the first place. So the voucher won't even have any effect. Not only that, but it says here, let's see, uh, that, that some, some private schools can choose to just not accept the voucher at all. So it wouldn't affect anything.
So was, do, do we, do we have that choice now? Do we get to choose who we can accept?
Absolutely not.
I think, otherwise, they would reconsider back in the day.
So just to add one thing to what Ms. McGill is saying, um, for instance, our neighboring county has two private schools in it. Warren County has two private schools.
I thought it showed somewhere.
Well, they may have, they have a.
I was trying to figure out who they were.
They have a virtual school. So they have Boyd Christian and Cap, Covenant Academy that I know of. Boyd Christian's tuition right now is five thousand dollars a year. Do you, what do you think Boyd Christian's, uh, tuition is going to be next year if this passes? It'll be seven thousand seventy-five dollars. Promise you that. They're going to raise their price and we're going to pay for it.
And they may have to, to handle the influx of students that they may get.
To hire their teachers.
Actually, if they, I, I would dare say that thing that these private schools aren't considering and it's not being considered in this, if the demand for your services go up, just like if the demand for, you know, uh, student enrollment here, we would have to do, address that. And guess what? It takes, uh, it takes funds to do that. And on a private school, it'll be, we'll take the voucher money and then we'll have to make it up with additional, uh, tuition costs.
Nobody's brought this up yet. There's three other, there's three other things that's tied to this bill. Public safety, flood relief for the people in North Carolina or in eastern Tennessee. Why are we having to tie a voucher bill to helping people who lost everything they had because of a natural disaster?
That are living in tents.
Yep.
In the freezing weather.
Yep.
With snow on the ground. The one that sponsored this bill, where's he from?
Representative Cheryl, could you speak to the, the, uh, the gentleman that, uh, that sponsored the, uh, bill? Mr., uh, the, uh, was it, uh, Mr. Lambert? Representative Lambeth, Lambert?
From here, there?
It don't matter.
Yeah, just your five, where you're at.
Well, it originated from the governor's office.
Okay.
So what, what happens on that process is the governor will issue it out to our leaders, which William Lambert is, is in leadership to pick it up in the House. And then Johnson, the Senator Johnson from Williamson County will pick it up in the Senate side. And then they'll bring it and, uh, either they will carry the legislation themselves or they'll, uh, uh, distribute it out to another member in the House or the Senate to carry it. So as of right now, uh, my understanding, uh, Lambert, Mayor Lambert and Leader Johnson will carry it in the House and the Senate. So that's, that's where, but it originated from the governor.
Okay, originated from the governor and say, uh, Senator Johnson's from Williamson County?
Yes.
And Representative Lambert from?
So, Sundar County.
Sundar County, okay.
There you go.
So, um, so talk about, okay. Well, we appreciate that. Thank you for, for, for providing this, that information. Okay. So, let's, uh.
I'm sorry, we cut Ms. McGill's.
I'm sorry, yes, you did. So Ms. McGill, we'll go back to you.
Well, um, to touch on a couple of other things we talked about in class was, um, a student brought up, could, would they even be using that money for the private schools in the first place? And I just so happened to be looking through this packet and that was one of the problems that happened in Ohio. Oh, my, sorry, uh, I'm sorry, Arizona. Because Arizona reported widespread, widespread misuse of voucher funds. Instead of being using off school-related items and activities, they were used to purchase items and experiences such as ice skating, trampolines, Disney plus subscriptions, and passes to ski resorts instead of the actual school themselves. And like we were talking, uh, you mentioned a second ago, um, a lot of that funding doesn't even go to people want, wanting their kids to go to, uh, private schools in the first place. It goes to people who are already in private schools. And it says over here, Florida's voucher, uh, voucher program, uh, only sixty-nine percent of the new recipients were, they, they were already enrolled in private schools and only thirteen percent came from public schools. With the remaining eighteen just being in, uh, kindergarteners. So it doesn't really give the choice of where to go. It just cuts down the cost of the people already going.
I, I think that, uh, I appreciate, uh, you, you sharing those facts, uh, tonight, bringing those to everyone's attention because, um, yes, that, that's, that's relevant. Anytime you, uh, you, anytime you give somebody else the opportunity to, uh, spend funds, they could have the opportunity to spend on something that, that you're, you're, that wasn't the intent, uh, in the way this appears, the way it was done in, in Arizona, that, uh, that was, that was allowed to happen. Ms. Douglas?
Yes, sir. Um, you know, they, they talk about it being school choice. I do feel like our special needs students, um, may not get that choice. You know, it, going through an application process, they could be, well, just skip right over that student.
I agree.
And not, because no services have to be provided. You know, and then that's, that's a tough choice there for, uh, that, that child. You know, they, they may not get that.
I mean, my grandson's considered special ed pre-K because he's severe ADHD. So he gets in third grade and they could go right over him because of that.
All right, so let's, uh, I appreciate, appreciate the, the comments and discussions. Let's go around the table and see if there's any, any other thoughts from you, Mr. Smith.
Just one more comment and I'll look to Mr. Dranberger to correct it. But I believe Hamilton, Davidson, and Chevy already have some type of voucher system in place. Is that correct?
That's correct. That happened a few years ago and I think the idea all along was to expand that offering. Um, this is, this is part of that process that would make it available to the rest of the state.
What they're currently doing in those three counties, if this passes, will those counties be bound by the new law?
Yeah, it's my understanding it would go to all ninety-five counties.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. McGill?
I have another question. With the funding of vouchers, it, it would reduce a lot of the funding that would go to public schools, correct?
Yeah, the, as of the system we're under now, the money follows the student. Is that correct?
Yeah, so initially, this is money outside of the TISA funding, the way it's written. So, uh, it wouldn't be money that comes from the current formula. Uh, and then the, the way I understand the bill, there's also a hold harmless in there that first year to make sure that you wouldn't fall below what you already have. But in subsequent years, um, the example I, I'll give most often is if you have twenty students in a class here in White County High School, if five of those students take the voucher and leave, I still need the teacher to teach those remaining fifteen students, but I lost thirty-five thousand dollars to pay that teacher. And, you know, in White County, the re, the reality is, is our numbers are, are down right now. You know, our high school, all across our district, we're down two hundred students from, uh, from about two years ago. Two hundred students at seven thousand seventy-five dollars is one point four million dollars that we're down. So every student that leaves is that much more. And at, uh, and in theory, we would have that many students to teach, but as I said earlier, under my scenario, I still have to have that teacher and that teacher has benefits that keep rising. We have utility costs that keep rising. We have deteriorating buildings that keep, the costs keep rising. So my expenditures continue to rise, but my revenues continue to go down with every student that would accept the vouchers.
Yeah, that was another, uh, thing we talked about in class that could be a problem, that, um, with, with the kids that do leave and the schools to get less funding, that would cause a, um, a wealth, a wealth gap in a way, where a lot of the people who wouldn't have enough money, even with the vouchers to go to school, would be getting an even worse education because you want to have enough to provide for those, those activities.
I, I think that is well said, and if I could just pile on to that for, for just, just a moment. The result of what Mr. Dranberger said and, and Ms. McGill, what you, you alluded to, is that if, if fixed costs rise or even remain stagnant and your revenues decline, well, then that puts you in a, in an economic situation, a business situation, that you say, okay, then I've got to make my expenditures match my revenue. And so what that would potentially do would mean not necessarily a, I think, as you termed it, a wealth gap. What it would mean is that where you go into a classroom and you want to see modern technology, you want to see people to have access to learning the way we typically learn, those resources may not be there because there may not be funds to, to put them in. And so, you know, at the end of the day, who's, that, that decision comes back to the board. So, you know, that would be a decision that the board would ultimately have, have, uh, have, have say on. And so, uh, it's, so yes, it, the, the revenue for the students, it, it does matter, as Mr. Dranberger said. Thank you. Ms. Officer?
So, much like everyone else has said, that my concern is that the choice isn't so much the parent, but the choice is the private school. The voucher does not guarantee a placement in this private school. They can say no based on academic performance, based upon special needs, based upon whatever it is that their choice is. And you may not receive the same services. I work with several high schools and I know the value of wraparound services that aren't necessarily provided at some of the private schools. Some of the things that our public schools can do to treat the student holistically and provide for needs maybe outside of the classroom. Private schools may or may not do that. So the way I look at it is this voucher, I think people see it as a guarantee, I can go to this other school. And they're missing that this scholarship isn't a guarantee into that other school.
So it may be kind of like a somewhat false hope for someone that says, hey, this is the solution. It may not be the solution that, that's been presented. I understand. Thank you. Thank you for sharing those comments. Ms. McDonald?
I don't know that I could add anything to, to anything that Ms. Officer, Mr. Smith, or Ms. McGill has, has already stated. I just would like to stand in opposition to this.
Thank you, Ms. Um, Ms. Douglas?
I don't have anything else to add, but I'm opposed to this.
Ms. Fowler?
Other than I just, I think I overlooked this the first time, so, except for a student enrolled in a homeschool, as defined, yada, yada, or in a church-related school. So if it's considered like a, I don't know, are church-related schools considered private schools?
Somewhere.
So if it's a church-related school, then they're, they don't, they're not acceptable either.
So.
By what this is saying right here.
So they, so Boyd Christian may not?
May not.
They may, they may not qualify.
May not qua, I don't know.
That, that would, that's a, that's a.
She's somebody a whole lot higher fact grade than us.
But I'm against it.
Well, I, I just, this comment, this being the last comment, then we'll, we'll, we'll move on. But something I, I, I read, um, recently, um, there's a, a British physicist and novelist, uh, C.P. Snow, back in nineteen fifty-nine, he, uh, he, uh, had a lecture at Cambridge University and it's called The Two Cultures. And with that, he, uh, was comparing some two cultures and the, one of the cultures was the scientific revolution. And, you know, we're familiar with the industrial revolution, but back in the, uh, there was another revolution that took place back in the mid-fifties and called the scientific, uh, revolution. And, you know, that's ultimately where that's came from. Out, out of that came from people learning how to split the atoms, put people in space and, and things of that nature. And, uh, one of the things he pointed out in that, made the comparison, that back during that time, he looked at two country, three countries. He looked at, uh, and because during that time, they were involved in, uh, allies in, in World War Two. Russia, Great Britain, and the United States. And during that time, he noticed that, um, that of those three countries, Russia put more emphasis in education for scientists and people in, in field, field of science. Russia put more emphasis in education for scientists and people in, in the field, field of science than England or the US. So they understood what was taking place, the education that was needed, and were preparing their country for the future. And when I read that and I thought about what we're talking about tonight, I couldn't help but not say this, is that, again, I go back and ask, what problem were we trying to solve? What problem were we trying to solve? The future's coming, and I'm not sure that giving a voucher, just paying money out, is where state needs to be spending their efforts. If you wanna be spending your efforts, let's get behind public schools, and allow private schools and other entities to come along as well. But public schools, state is responsible for funding public schools. Let's get behind public schools, and let's fund what, you know, the next century is gonna need as far as education. See, if we really do go and try to put people on Mars, what's that gonna take? And how do we need to educate our, our, our students to prepare for that, for the future? So with that, I will, I will share this with you. For your convenience, in your packet, there was a resolution of the White County Board of Education opposing the Twenty Twenty-Five Educational Freedom Act. It was there for your convenience. It's not a recommendation. It's there for your convenience. But if we chose to take the next step, as we, I think around this table discussed, that we're, we don't think this is a good thing for the state of Tennessee. We certainly don't think it's a good thing gonna, gonna help public education. Then the way we can support our legislatures, the ideal way would be through resolution. And so this was a draft that was put together just to help us, because we don't do this a lot. And so it's not something we could do on the fly in a meeting. So we needed something for you to consider. There, that information is there for you. There may be other action that the board wants to take, but this is a time that if we wanted to take some action, then what we would do is somebody would make a motion, and somebody would second that motion. We'd have, have a discussion on that. We would take, take a vote. So this time, I'll open the floor if anybody would like to make a motion on anything.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will, I will say that the resolution that has been drafted is very well-written. It's very well put together, and I think it states everything that we've talked about here tonight. So I would make a motion that we approve this resolution as it is written.
Okay. Have a motion. Mr. McDonald, have a second.
Second.
Second, but Mr. Smith? All right. Discussion.
We may have did this backwards. We've already had our discussion, I think.
Not on the resolution.
Okay.
We have a discussion on the resolution, because that's what, that's the motion.
I don't know who wrote this resolution, but kudos.
Yeah, I agree.
Very well put together. Ms. McGill probably wrote it.
She very well could have. So, just for public, those in our, in our viewing audience, viewing and listening audience, I won't, I won't read the entire resolution, but I'll try to read some highlights. It's a resolution of the White County School Board opposing the Twenty Twenty-Five Educational Freedom Act. Whereas White County School Board is dedicated to ensuring that all students within the district receive high-quality, equitable, inclusive education, fostering the education excellence, and preparing students for success in an ever-evolving world. White County School Board believes public education is the cornerstone of a healthy democracy, and that our public schools should be fully supported and prioritized in order to provide necessary resources, support, and opportunity for every student, regardless of socioeconomic background, geographic location, personal circumstance. General Assembly is currently considering the Twenty Twenty-Five Education Act, which includes provisions that would divert public funds from public schools to private institutions through mechanisms such as private school vouchers and unaccountable charter schools. And whereas the White County School Board is deeply concerned that the implementation of the Twenty Twenty-Five Education Freedom Act would lead to a destabilization of public, public education, particularly in rural and underserved communities by redirecting vital funds from our public schools to private schools that are not subject to the same accountability standards as public schools. Does this sound very much like what we, our discussion? I apologize. I said I wasn't gonna read it, but I believe I will. Whereas White County Scoreboard believes that public funds should be invested in strengthening public schools, improving teacher conversation, compensation, expanding access to educational resources, ensuring that every public school in Tennessee has the tools it needs to meet the diverse needs of all students. And whereas the White County School Board believes that local communities should have a central role in determining how their school funds, schools are funded, and how education decisions are made, ensuring that those decisions reflect the specific needs and values of the community. And whereas the White County School Board recognizes school choice is a complex issue, and that we are committed to providing quality education options within the framework of a strong, well-supported public schools, but opposes the approach proposed by the Twenty Twenty-Five Education Freedom Act, which prioritizes privatization over public investment in education. Now therefore, be it resolved at the White County School Board. One opposes the Twenty Twenty-Five Education Freedom Act as currently proposed, due to concerns that it will harm public education in Tennessee, divert critical resources from our public schools, and create further inequities across to quality education, particularly in rural and underserved communities. Two, it affirms its commitment to advocating for policies that support and strengthen Tennessee's public education system, including adequate funding for schools, improved teacher support, and measures that ensure all students have the right to high-quality educational opportunities. Three, it calls upon the Tennessee General Assembly to reconsider provisions in the Twenty Twenty-Five Education Freedom Act, and instead prioritize legislation that supports public schools, invest in educators, and works to reduce educational discrepancies across the state. Four, it urges lawmakers to engage with educators, parents, students, and local school boards in the development of policies that best serve the needs of Tennessee's public education system, and ensure that every child in our state has access to an excellent education, regardless of their background or geographical location. And six, pledges to continue to advocate for the improvement and expansion of public education in White County and across Tennessee, and to stand firm in support of policies that prioritize public investment in schools, students, and teachers.
I think one thing we've left out right there, and not to be added to this, but our teachers do not get the support from the state that they need as far as their. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, because the, the salaries that they make, it's, it's, it's nothing. I mean, they, those people are, those, those folks, and I know my wife is an educator, and, and it's good, and we're thankful, and we're blessed for the salary that she, that she has. But you know what? Those special ed teachers and those, those folks that are, that are getting beat up every day by those students that might not know any better. I think we need to invest in, in those types of programs instead of sending our money to a, to a private edu, to a private school for people who can already afford to go to that private school.
I have to agree with that. I know I talk a lot about Cameron's pre-K class, you know, special ed pre-K at Woodland Park. I admire her. There's twenty students in her pre-K class. Twenty. Because didn't we need another pre-K? Am I not right? And we didn't have the funding, right?
Well, it was funding and the teacher, needing a teacher that's qualified.
Saying, yes, and I, I mean, I praise her all the time, you know. Those kids are always running around, you know, when I take Cam, and when I pick him up, and I admire her. I mean, not just her, but all of them, but seeing, you know, the, the kids in there, when we go do stuff with them, man, they, they take on a lot. They take on a lot. And they're there, I mean, they're with their children and their grandchildren more than we are as parents sometimes, you know, when they're young and we're working all the time. It's, I admire them. Kudos to the ones that helped raise my children, if you're watching.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Comments?
And this one was one of them. All three of them.
So, in the, in the resolution, now therefore, it talks about, it uses the word quality education. Let me just tell you about the quality education going on in, in our, in our district, because the mayor and City Alderman were informed of this personally, as well as our county commission, and they were informed of this well personally. And I appreciate Mr. Drabberger going, attending that with me and, and sharing, doing a presentation for both of those, those bodies. But again, just as a reminder, White County Schools recognize that the state as a Level Five school district. All schools received high-letter grades on the state report card. White County High School receiving an A. We had five, we had Level Five schools, White County High School. We had Level Four schools, being Bonnycroft and Woodland Park. And this is all based on the state's measuring metrics for, for academic growth and results in, in, in academic growth. And then we have four reward schools. That's the highest ranking category. And that was Castle, Doyle, Finley, and Northfield. So our district's ranking, rank in, in, in top rankings in the, in the state out of, in sixteen districts in Upper Cumberland, in, in third grade, fourth and fifth grade, English, math, and science, and in sixth grade and seventh grade is sciences, social studies. And so I think the results, the facts are on our side, that White County is providing quality education. So we didn't have any problem putting that in our resolution. So with that, with that said. But sorry to digress on that in our discussion, but we have a motion and a second on adopting this resolution as our position on the Twenty Twenty-Five Educational Freedom Act. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, and the resolution will need to be signed by all, all board members. Thank you for, for your time and your, your discussion deliberation in this. Next item on our agenda is public comment. We, do we have anybody on public comment? We did not have anybody, nobody sign up for public comment. We do have some visitors in the, the audience tonight. If there, I'm gonna assume you came as a group, and if so, is there anybody designated that would like to speak to the board? We will allow you five minutes if you would like to speak on any particular subject. Okay. Would you mind just stand up right there, and you'll be fine where, where you're at?
I know this wasn't really a topic for yours meeting tonight, but.
Wait, wait. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, yes. I'm Grace Carter. I play the high school basketball team for White County. I just wanted to speak today about Kelly's eligibility. I know it's not the only one, and that's not on the only agenda, but I feel like as her teammate, I've been doing her a service to not talk about it, you know. And I'm speaking for behalf of the team. I think we all can do, we will do whatever we can to get her eligible now, whatever it takes. If there's anything we can do, or an explanation as to why she's not eligible now, if there's anything we can do, I mean, we'll do it.
Thank you for, thank you for, for sharing that, and appreciate your, your concern for your teammate and friend. That's, that is a subject that's not on our agenda, so we wouldn't go in and have deliberation on that, or, or take that matter up. But if you, if you would like to speak to us after the meeting, we would, would entertain and share what we know, what we can. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Carter. All right. Next item on the agenda is more chairman's comments. So have a reminder that our next board meeting will be February thirteenth at Finley Elementary. We'll have our work session at five o'clock, and our regular board meeting at six. Also, as a reminder, board members, please, your statement of interest disclosure is due by January thirty-first. Please make, make sure that you get that filed, because we would not want anybody to incur a, a, a penalty for not doing that.
Can we send out a group text tonight afterwards?
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll send out a group text and email for the next, next seven days, okay?
Thank you.
If that would, if that would help remind some of us, okay. All right. With, with that being said, next item is, is a gentleman to take a motion for adjournment. Motion and second. All in favor?